To the clarify of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes of the September 1st meeting were emailed. Do we have any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Motion to accept them is emailed.
Mr. Sack, in all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Uh, we have two public hearings this evening, so we need to close the council meeting. Suspend the council meeting.
I'll make a motion to suspend the council.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Now we need a motion to open the public hearing for the Gilpin Confirming Resolution.
So moved.
So you said. Okay. Uh, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. So, we're into the public hearing, any comments concerning, uh, first of all, we need to make a matter of record that we did legally advertise the public hearing. We need a motion to approve on it, be noticed, legal notice.
So moved.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Uh, before we get into any comments, I, we'll let Mark come forward.
I gave the original publication notice to fill us to make a matter of record on the notice of public hearing that was scheduled at 7:30 this evening on the request for the Confirming Resolution for this tax abatement. I'll pass out a, or give copies here. Tim, do you want me to just give it to them and they can consider it later?
Yeah.
And also I gave a copy of the, uh, thank you, the affidavit of service.
Which one? Matt's patting that out.
Yeah, we need to make a matter of record affidavit of service provided by Mark.
So moved.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried, thank you.
The affidavit of service shows that the, uh, the notice of hearing and the, uh, the clerical resolution along with the copy of the statement of benefits was served upon called the taxing units, uh, which may be affected by the taxes. So, this is a public hearing, my error.
No, Paul's here, Paul. Um, so do we, do we act on the resolution during the public hearing or after we close that?
The public hearing right now is to provide council members to ask any questions you may have regarding, uh, the nature of the project, the information disclosed on the statement of benefits. It also provides the public an opportunity to ask, uh, any questions or have any comments regarding the proposed abatement. The abatement request is 10 years on the real estate improvements, five years on the personal property.
Is it pro rata?
It's phased in over that period of time.
So if we have no, no public comments, uh, we can have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Uh, this time we need a motion to go back into our regular council meeting. Motion second, all favor say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. We're in the council meeting, uh, the next item we need to do is, is to pass or fail the Confirming Resolution 2015 by short title.
Dash.
What's the next number, Phil?
15, 2015 dash 15.
Okay.
15?
Yeah.
Make the motion to pass, Resolution 2015 dash 15.
Ken, excuse me, I think we have to introduce her first, don't we, Tim?
Yeah. Motion to introduce, Resolution 2015 dash 15, second.
Motion second, all favor say aye. Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Tim, if you could read that by short title.
Confirming Resolution Number 2015 dash 15, City Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, Confirming Resolution for the Designation of an Economic Revitalization Area Upon the Application of Gilpin Inc., FKA Gilpin IR Works Inc.
Motion to pass, Resolution 2015 dash 15, second.
Motion second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Paul, thank you for your confidence in our community and, and coming in front of us. Thank you. Mark, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So Arnold signs up and looks like they're ready to move.
Yeah, they're, they're moving dirt today.
Uh, I don't know that there's any necessarily originals, but we need more, probably three or four copies signed.
We'll get you one, copy of that. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Okay, we have another public hearing concerning our budget. Um, we need to suspend the council meeting again.
So moved.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Uh, now we need a motion to open the public hearing for the discussion on the 2016 budget. So moved. Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Okay, we're into the public hearing, fellas, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
The budgets are estimated at $8,349,200 and calculated on 85% of the 2015 of those valuation. The proposed tax rate is at $1.25. The current rate is at $1.3, which is 22 cents more. All budgets can be reviewed on the LGS website if anyone wants to review these, or I have them in my office. This is just a time for the public to see if they have any objections or have any questions on the budget for 2016.
And this includes the new item of Loewit, that's included in this new budget for 2016. Okay, do we have a county review on this coming up?
September 17th, we'll have a non-voting review of County Council, and then adoption will be up to respect.
Any comments concerning the 2016 budget? If not, then we can close the public hearing on the 2016 budget.
So moved.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Um, now we need a motion to go back into the council meeting. Yeah, but we, we gotta do that.
Motion to go back into the council meeting, second.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. So now we're back into the council meeting, uh, we have an ordinance for the budget, and we can pass that, you know, as you so desire, one, two, three readings. I would recommend two.
Yeah, you got two.
And that's 2015?
2015 dash 12.
You ready for a motion to introduce it?
Do we have a legal advertisement?
And we don't have, on the LGS website, we don't have advertisements.
Okay, good. So, yes, Kenny, we can make a motion.
Make a motion to introduce ordinance 2015 dash 12 for its first reading by short title.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Ordinance Number 2015 dash 12, Ordinance for Resolution for Appropriation and Tax Rates.
That's pretty short. All right.
Make a motion for passage of ordinance 2015 dash 12 on its first reading, second.
Motion second, a real call vote, please.
Cam Collier?
Yes.
Bill Crowe?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fullen-Camp?
Yes.
Ken Meyer?
Yes.
Make a motion to introduce ordinance 2015 dash 12 on its second reading by short title, second.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Ordinance Number 2015 dash 12, Ordinance for Resolution for Appropriations and Tax Rates.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2015 dash 12 on its second reading, second.
Motion second, a real call vote, please.
Cam Collier?
Yes.
Bill Crowe?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fullen-Camp?
Yes.
Ken Meyer?
Yes.
I make a motion that we table ordinance 2015 dash 12 until our next scheduled meeting on October 6th, second.
Motion in a second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Okay, the next item is a third reading. At the last meeting, we had first and second reading on an ordinance for concrete demolition material, to accept that gives us the, uh, the ability then to, uh, charge people for dumping their, their broken concrete and helps them dispose of, of that material. So, it's only the third and last reading.
That was number 2011.
15 dash 11.
Make a motion to place ordinance 2015 dash 11 on its third reading by short title, second.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Ordinance Number 2015 dash 11, Short Title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, Which Establishes Fees to Be Charged by the Decatur Street Department for Disposal of Demolition Concrete.
Move for passage of ordinance 2015 dash 11.
Motion second, a real call vote, please.
Cam Collier?
Yes.
Bill Crowe?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fullen-Camp?
Yes.
Ken Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item we have is street closure. Uh, ED, EDZ Motorcycle over there on the corner of First and Jackson Street, uh, was requesting closure of, uh, First Street on October the 1st from 5 to 8 o'clock. This is the third time they've had this, and I think they do it every month, so it's worked out well in the past, I don't see why it wouldn't now. They filed the correct event form and, uh, just asking permission to close that street.
And what date, October?
October 1st.
On Thursday?
Yeah, it's usually on Thursday they do it.
Word of the hours?
From 5 o'clock until 8 o'clock. They say 8 p.m. ish, I don't know what that means, Larry's, Larry issues. So, uh, we, we need a motion to give them permission.
So moved.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. Thank you very much.
Should we, I mean, it's me, after 5 o'clock, but the only business over there that really affects is the Grainery.
Grainery.
And part of that, they have to talk to them, right?
Right, right, that's exactly right, yeah. And they've never had a problem with it the last two, so I'm assuming it's okay.
There is new business gonna open up in that area soon.
I'd like to report on the train depot, the girls down there, the Tensi Depot, um, they did get some prices on, on the, redoing the roof, and the city agreed to split the cost of that, the cost is $7,000, so the city will be contributing $3,500 to help with that roof. Uh, we have some funds still available through the Adams County Community Foundation, we'll use those funds, and then the remainder that is needed will come from the CCD funds. So, just really a report, nothing else. I'll sit up, I was contacted by the Chamber Commerce, uh, they're getting ready for 2016, and they start some advertising information concerning the Spotlight, which is usually the first Saturday in March of 2016. Uh, last year, well, last couple of years, we have contributed $1,500 to their effort as a sponsor, uh, which entitles you to some booth space and some other activities. Uh, they're kinda asking me that, I told them I wouldn't be around here in 2016, so asked council if you guys wanna make a decision to okay that, we've done it in the last few years. Years ago, we used to have $3,000, we cut it in half here about five years ago, so if you wanna...
Last year, Melissa had a booth, is that right?
Did you have a booth, Melissa?
I was at the Main Street.
Oh, you was the Main Street Group. Uh, I think what we did last year is we gave our booth space to the art show at North House, uh, High School. So, if you wanna do something, if not, that's, that's fine too.
I'll make a motion to continue to support the Chamber's efforts at Spotlight on Decatur, amount of $1,500.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried. I do have one more ordinance to bring up, and this is for, uh, it changes our zoning map, and Tim, maybe you can explain that a little bit.
Sure. Uh, at the Plan Commission meeting this evening, earlier this afternoon, the Plan Commission made a recommendation to amend the zoning map to be consistent with the amendment that was made in the zoning code. Uh, previously on our own, under our own zoning code, we had B1, B2, B3 zoning classifications. Uh, to be consistent with zoning classifications in Adams County and surrounding communities, that zoning classification was changed from B1 to C1, B1 or B2 to C2, C3 to, or B3 to C3. Um, that was changed in the code, but the map itself was not amended, so this amends the map to be consistent with the code. Uh, the recommendation was for council to approve that ordinance, amending the code, uh, so it would be ordinance Number 2015 dash 13, uh, and at this time I'd entertain a motion to introduce it.
Three times?
I'll bet it to you though.
It's up to you guys.
Make a motion to introduce ordinance 2015 dash 13 for its first reading by short title, second.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Ordinance 2015 dash 13, Short Title, An Ordinance Amending Zoning Map of the City of Decatur, Indiana, Is Incorporated into Chapter 150 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 to Reflect the General Rezoning of Real Property Within Previously Zoned B1, B2, B3 Zoning Classifications to C1, C2, and C3 Zoning Classifications.
That wasn't as short as that last one.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2015 dash 13 on its first reading, second.
Uh, motion second, a real call vote, please.
Cam Collier?
Yes.
Bill Crowe?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fullen-Camp?
Yes.
Ken Meyer?
Yes.
Make a motion to introduce ordinance 2015 dash 13 on its second reading by short title, second.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried.
Ordinance 2015 dash 13, Short Title, An Ordinance Amending Zoning Map of the City of Decatur, Indiana, Is Incorporated into Chapter 150 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 to Reflect the General Rezoning of Real Property Within Previously Zoned B1, B2, and B3 Zoning Classifications to C1, C2, and C3 Zoning Classifications.
Move for passage of ordinance 2015 dash 13 on its second reading, second.
Motion second, a real call vote, please.
Cam Collier?
Yes.
Bill Crowe?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fullen-Camp?
Yes.
Ken Meyer?
Yes, and I move that ordinance Number 2015 dash 13 be tabled until our next meeting on October 6th, second.
Motion second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion is carried, thank you. Uh, we'll go down to department head reports, uh, Gray?
You're off.
You good? Uh, Roger?
No, I don't have any.
Jim?
Nothing.
Jeremy?
Start out with, obviously, this week's heavy trash, um, so just want to remind everyone to get your stuff out, uh, for crunching. It's been a pretty heavy last couple of days, we ran a little behind on the first two days here, so please be patient with us on the, some of the larger items, because they take us the first couple of hours, the next one we, everything picked up. Starting Monday morning, we will be flushing hydrants citywide, fire hydrants for all next week on Holland Way, we did send notices out this morning, I'm not sure, you guys who received them yet, and I sent them to Jay, and our department, I've been touching up some areas of concern with building enforcement, uh, the last several weeks, and we've been having some problems with overgrown brush, weeds and such in some of the back alleys, uh, behind these residents. The majority of them have been coming from private property, basically grown over the fence, grown, you know, down over the alleys. We have cleaned a few up, um, it's been site hazards against the alleys and such, but just kinda really wanna ask for some cooperation from the homeowners, you know, if you know that, you know, there's some overgrown areas, you know, please help us out by getting them cleaned up. Um, if you're not sure, we'll be contacting you over the next few weeks, uh, try to get some of that cleaned up, so, um, pretty simple task, you know, we put it out several years ago, and we had a real good response from the homeowners, we want the address going around. Uh, Second Street Project is complete, other than, um, AEP will be turning on the next of street lighting towards the end of next week. They were short on some material, they thought they would get them on today, uh, once they checked the warehouse, they were short on some wire, so, uh, they're looking probably Monday, Tuesday, and next week, they promised they would be on by, by Friday of next week.
Nice. Good.
Um, also on that Street Project, Winchester Street Project's also complete, remember we did considerable amount of sidewalks, paving and such, uh, we've had tremendous response for those last two projects, um, people really, really enjoy what we've done, uh, they're, they're using the sidewalks, I keep them safe, so, um, just, uh, it's been very supportive.
Very nice, very nice.
We've, we've had a lot of, like you said, a lot of nice...
Should mention, that's phase one of, of the project, uh, we wanna continue to do Winchester Street from Elm Street where we stopped, and take it, if we have enough funds, take it all the way to Line Street next year, if we don't, we can at least go maybe halfway and do it in the third year, but we're getting there.
The, uh, that's been most of my comments in the last week or so, is people leaving that southern portion of the day, you know.
Why just...
It's, it's...
How about that?
Just explains on the own funding and such, they're understandable, they're just very interested in the possibilities of all the work.
Good.
That's all good. Uh, all the proposed paving that we agreed upon for so far 2016 is now complete, uh, Brooks Construction, we worked last Saturday, finished up a couple of areas that they didn't get done, uh, so that, that's all complete. Uh, the Monroe Street Project, you guys have saw in the paper, some emails that I sent to, there are some, few little snags the last week or so, with, with some testing on, on asphalt, um, that has been corrected, we did lay the surface today, you're probably actually just finishing up about an hour, you know, not long ago. Um, the plan is, is to have that total project done by Thursday, extracting, um, the permanent signage and everything, so, that's gonna be a huge improvement to that area, um, very much welcomed from the homeowners. There's still gonna be a few little bugs to, to work out, uh, we're trying to schedule a...
Pre-final session?
Some big deal completion or pre-final, uh, either this Friday afternoon or, um, next Tuesday morning. There, there's a group of us that have to get together, and the schedules just have to match to be able to...
What that is?
Walk through the project, do any little things, any little adjustments that need to be done, so, uh, be a nice project to have behind of us, and, uh, I think people are gonna enjoy that out there, so.
Can I just, I mean, having...
Any questions, Chairman?
Living out there and driving that road every day, I mean, I, I know there was some, I was like apologetic that it took this long, but it's really not been a big deal. I, I'm amazed at how patient the workers are with all of that, I mean, rarely were we not traveling up and down there, and, uh, I think it's fine, and from when they came out and redid it, I couldn't believe how quickly that was, taking out the old asphalt and putting it down, I mean...
They, they ended up having to remove right out of 1,100 ton of what we call binder, which is the first gen asphalt, um, and basically it was...
On their...
It, it was nothing but...
On their nickel, yeah.
A lot of it was weather related that day, and they laid it as we were getting into the June, July rain events, and, uh, there was just some, I don't know, it's there.
Okay.
Yeah, like Cam said, it's been a good project, we were approximately six weeks ahead of schedule at one point, with the testing, with the delays on trying to get some answers from N-Doc, pretty much couldn't finish on the date, so...
You, you said the paving for the year was, was over, uh, did Brooks do County Road, well, it's Country Brook runs, so that matched up to East Monroe Street.
And, and there still could be some little areas, some smelly patchings, some alleys and stuff, this fall, we just need to get those paved.
That's a, country, that's a world of difference, that's amazing work.
Good.
Country Brook was straight up on the start line, then working construction.
Yeah, probably additional traffic went down there, I'm sure some of the materials were delivered there by the heavy trucks, so.
I, I was hopeful it would end at 16 on Country Brook, but we're happy with it.
All right, thanks, Jeremy. Tim? Bill?
I just wanna point out, uh, this is not my favorite week, uh, when they have, when you're code enforcement and you're going around lighting homes for junk trash and debris, and you look at the front yards in the, the city of Decatur, uh, and see all this junk, but I just wanted to point out that I, I hope the people of Decatur realize what a wonderful service, uh, the city gives them to pick up all this junk and trash and debris. It, it, I don't think any other city that I'm aware of does this for their citizens, so I just wanna make sure the people knew, know how, how good service is.
Good, thanks, Bill. Ann?
Melissa?
About a good sign she has to get up and tell us.
Good evening. A reminder that, uh, Decatur Main Street is hosting the Historic Route 27 Meeting this coming Monday at 2 o'clock here, and everybody's welcome to attend, we have about 25 RSVPs from people throughout the nine-county region who will be joining us to learn about that, so, one of these things we're also going to do for this meeting is we plan to use the technology and the strength to video this meeting and put it out there so that those who cannot attend can view it and, um, participate in this project. Um, the other...
Melissa, excuse me, um, what this meeting is on, on Old 27, it's trying to take the old original route of Highway 27 and get people to, to kinda use that, otherwise it'll, it'll bring them from Marmouth through downtown Decatur and then on out to 27 again, and then they'll go down to the next community, but there's an old map right behind Melissa there from 1926, I was looking at it today, I, I think it's a very interesting map of where Old 27 used to be, so.
And the aim is to get the state to designate Old 27 as a historic road so that we can promote it in direct signs.
Does that have to be done by the state legislature to designate it, and then in the other...
Lots of steps to the state level that we have to do.
And I know Max and Wiley and Larry, they've all worked with Melissa on this, so...
Um, last week, the last city council meeting, we had, um, a nice discussion about parking for our North Second Street businesses, and Main Street has organized a meeting to meet with those, those owners on North Second Street, it is Wednesday, September 23rd at 4 o'clock, Nivek Bistro is nice enough to host us for the meeting, and again, those building and business owners on North Second are invited to attend, they've all been notified, um, by mail of this meeting, so we're gonna have a, um, a nice discussion about parking to accommodate their business.
Good.
Any questions?
Can I ask, Melissa, we're talking technology, and you, you know, are we, we are recording this?
That's correct.
Did we get the video?
Yeah.
This is being video recorded?
Yeah.
And it is on where?
YouTube.
On our YouTube channel?
You go to the city web page, you can find it.
Okay.
Good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Uh, Nick?
Yeah.
Just wondering why Alan was recording me.
Just prior to the next Board of Works meeting, there's gonna be discussion on Master Drive, uh, we've notified the homeowners in that area, and there's actually a plan developed showing the proposed homeowner... the proposed stormwater improvements. Chairman and I are gonna meet in advance of that, and just kinda inform them of what the project will entail. At that point, we're really not promising when we're gonna construct it, because right now we're still collecting funds, when we're gonna be able to do work. It's hopefully on the agenda for the following meeting on October 6th to actually discuss the project in a little more detail and figure out what Board of Works is hoping to do on the project, but.
So on October 6th, you're gonna have, uh?
We'll have, well, on the 5th, we'll have, we'll have a meeting with the residents, so the affected parties are gonna have them contacted. Letters have gone out on Monday, or actually, I think it Friday went out, so they should be receiving that, not yesterday, today, notifying them that there should be a meeting for that, and then we'll be discussing it in the Board of Works meeting the following day.
Got it. Okay, so you're gonna have a meeting with the landowners on your proposed ideas?
River side, so it's just, it's essentially, it's not a board hearing, but it kinda is, really there's no action going on, we're just putting out, essentially answering the questions.
Just giving information.
Yep.
Alright, thanks, Nate. Okay, uh, anyone else? Council members, any comments from the council members?
Um, stellar state teams coming on Thursday to do a debrief. Also, we didn't really just, I guess, announce this, but we were successful in our bid to have, to work with University of St. Francis and their meta program to help us basically be able to market our ideas to the creative and millennial generation. So, they're gonna come here and meet with us and learn about more of our community and work on a kinda introductory marketing plan, so.
That's good.
I, just as a, I took part in a panel discussion on Friday. It was a two-day symposium on creative economies that was put on in Fort Wayne at the University of St. Francis. It was a year-long study that culminated in this two-day event, and they had national speakers come in, and it truly validated what we're doing, the plan that we have, and talking about how this is the right approach, and, um, the Mayor Gary was there as well, and they do, they're doing a lot of things, I mean, they're a lot bigger and a lot further ahead, but.
They need to do a lot of things.
But it was very encouraging.
Aw, no, he wrote it down. I'm sorry, Cam, I shouldn't.
No, that's it. I guess, just, we'll put it out there, but we're gonna have a meeting then, short order, uh, I guess in October, to kinda recap and bring the community back together, and those, specifically those chosen to invest in our community through the capital campaign, to basically say, okay, here's, here's what we learned and here's what we're doing, um, because I think we're, we will move forward on project.
Thank you, Cam, that brings me to another subject. Nate, aren't you working with the university?
Oh, yeah, um, actually, and Nate too, they could do a little bit, yeah, but, um, I submitted some of the design projects, we talked about stormwater improvements, I submitted a couple of design projects up to the civil engineering bachelor program at Charm University, and they selected to do a drainage project for us as the senior design project. So, we're hoping that when they're finishing up that project in the spring semester, they'll have them present the works as far as they already seen the presentation, so. They actually picked our project over one in at Ole, so.
Yeah.
Good about that.
Well, they wanted to get out of town, evidently.
So, yeah, they got us to drive up there, but they're gonna come down here and do Gilbert Forest for free, I mean, hey, if we were to put a dollar amount, it's probably a $20,000 study I could pay for. They're gonna do data collection and actually give you a presentation. I kinda gave them a blank slate, so there's, it'll be some fresh ideas from them as far as how they would handle a specific area, so.
Good.
I'll give you some more details as they finish up on it.
You have something, Larry?
When Cam was talking about the capital campaign fund, as this week, we're at 640 street bounds.
Good. Thank you, Larry, for stepping up to that, you did a lot of that legwork to get it done, so. And thank everybody on the greater Decatur team that stepped forward.
I'll piggyback off of what Bill stated about the big trash pickup, but I wanna thank Jeremy and have Jeremy thank his crew. I talked to one of the people on the trash pickup crew, crews I should say, last night, I asked him how it went, he says, "I'm really tired," and that was Monday.
That was Monday.
That was Monday. So, I know these, those guys are really working hard and we should all thank them.
It's great service, thank you. Any other comments? Public, Dennis, you want something to bring up?
Question.
This is Dennis. Dennis Huffman.
Can the city rent out a city-owned building?
Mm-hmm.
Your question on what to do with the old city hall. Your stellar grant proposal at one point wanted to make a building with artists' loss to contribute to your sculpture tour. What about using the old city hall as a rental for artists?
That has been.
Looked into.
Looked into, we did look into that, the developer looked at that building, didn't think it was quite big enough to get enough loss in to pay off the investment that he'd have, basically, but he did look at that, definitely.
And do you know where we are looking? I mean, as far as the?
Yeah, that's just, yeah, that's not off the table, the project that was in the stellar plan is still.
Very much alive.
Alive.
Yeah, why, I just thought you were commenting, uh, wanting to sell buildings up as a possible use, for now, we can get it sold down there.
Yes. Thank you, anything else? Yeah, those stellar projects are still alive, we're gonna approach each one of those projects individually, not as a stellar, but as the funds become available, so. We're gonna move forward with each, each project that we proposed, so. Anybody else? Everybody shine. Wiley?
I have two things, first, we talked about the Rebuild Cities Initiative, if you haven't seen the video that came out of that, I encourage everyone to do that, Decatur actually was highlighted quite well in that video with Old 27 Ice Cream Shop and Cam Collier actually speaking and promoting, uh, the area, so that's a plus for Decatur.
That was good, in fact, I think Cam was the only city councilman in the whole ten county region that actually spoke. They had some other councilmen on the video, but none of them spoke, so. Cam must have that, that video look or something.
No, it's the price you pay for going and asking for their help.
Well, thanks for doing that. Go ahead, Wiley.
And then, secondly, you should have, a week or so ago, all received an email inviting you to the Old Collaborative Educational Summit, uh, being held September 30th at Sweetwater Sound, starting at nine o'clock. The purpose of this is to share what has been done the last two years in our region and giving direction of what we can be doing in the future, and also trying to gain more help and more collaboration amongst all of us. It will be, some of the meeting will be county-specific and looking at your own county and what you can be doing as well, so encouraging anyone that's available to attend.
In that vein, you should all know that every municipality in the county has Roger Duck to connect your career. Roger Duck means yes, hey.
They've stepped forward for the funding.
Yes, they're all funding.
That sounds like a military term, Roger Duck.
Hey, also, I know I've said it before, but all the time it's our council, if you had an opportunity to go to the open house, it was fantastic.
Very nice.
You will not recognize the police station, it's.
Our council was like to thank all the city council members, the mayor, who showed up, thank you very much.
It was very nice, I was very impressed with it.
How many guests did you have that night?
We had, um, the ones that signed in, 0470.
Wonderful.
Good.
And then include children, yeah.
Good. Okay. Any other public comments? Cam, you got anything? Thank you.
I do.
Oh, you do.
Uh, at the last meeting.
Oh, I forgot, yeah, I'm sorry.
Counsel.
Bring that up to me and I forgot it.
Counsel indicated a desire to express interest in certain properties on First Street and a couple of properties on Monroe Street between First Street and the river, so I prepared a resolution expressing interest in those properties and then authorizing appraisals. It doesn't mean that you have to immediately pursue the appraisals, I think the first step is, it's just a procedural step, you have to express the interest in it by resolution, and then I think we can approach the various property owners to gauge their interest in possibly selling the property if that's available or present, then we can move forward with the appraisals, and that then determines what we can offer for them.
I think it's important to point out that the reason that we're looking at this is because it would be a significant cost savings to the overall design.
Potentially for the sewer project.
Sewer project, and then it's also for economic development along First Street.
It fits.
We may not be interested in any of it, but this gives us the opportunity to look.
We're looking at the most economical way to do the sewer project. You can't pursue it until you take this step, so it's just a first step.
So, we need a motion to introduction.
Resolution 16.
To introduce Resolution 2015-16.
So moved.
Motion second, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motions carried.
Resolution 2015-16, short title, resolution of the common council of the city of Decatur expressing an interest in purchasing real estate and authorizing appraisals.
A motion to approve, if you so desire.
So moved. Second?
Motion second, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motions carried. Motion to clean, to say that advertised.
Sign away.
Did you say second?
No, I said, sign away.
It's Cam, Billy, excuse me. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion is carried.
Make a motion to adjourn.